Councilmember Thompson will give the indication.
If you'd join me, please, if you'd stand. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this city and all the citizens here that work so hard to make our city great. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for all that they do for keeping us safe. Lord Heavenly Father, bless our deliberations today and help us come up with good solutions for the city of Odessa. Watch over us as we go through this week and work through these issues that we have and try to solve them in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thanks. All right. Somebody's got it here. Number three on the agenda, I have. Okay, so number three is to discuss and authorize the city manager to execute the purchase of Palo Alto Prisma software with CDWG for cloud security, and that's Mr. Flores.
I would like to move table the agenda of item number three.
Is your microphone on? I'm sorry.
No, it is not.
I'd move to table, Agenda Item Number Three.
I have a motion to table number three. Do I have a second?
Is there a reason we're tableing it? I'm just curious.
It's security.
It's what?
It's security. Security.
It's dirty.
Security?
Security.
We plan on bringing it back at your next agenda.
Excuse me, and possibly put it on executive session. We're going to see if it qualifies or not. I think it will, and it needs to be some discussion in the executive session.
I second it.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Conell, a second by Mr. Mitchell, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion passed. Number four, to discuss authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for TDMA, DDM features. Chief Kirk.
This is going to be more of a Tony Flores show than my Kirk show, but I just would like to lay the groundwork for you. So for years, there's been issues with communications, with radio communications in the Permian Basin. Several years ago, the city of Odessa purchased a radio corps, and everyone, every police department and fire department in Ector County is on our corps. So we can communicate with, say, Sheriff's Department, School District, OFR, everyone, and DPS. Everyone can communicate, but there's always been that, the lack of the ability to communicate with Midland County. We're Motorola. Everyone in Ector County's been Motorola forever. City of Midland was Harris Radio, and they have been for several years. And Midland County was their own separate system. Well, very recently, Midland County decided to purchase a radio corps, and they stood up their own corps. City of Midland spent several million dollars modernizing their radio system. We've joined those corps. We brought that MOU to you guys, and y'all approved it. So now our corps, we are live on their corps. We are in the process of joining both corps, and then our corps will be the backup redundant corps. The great thing about this is that it allows us to speak with everyone after we work out a few more bugs. There's always a few bugs. And it extends, effectively extends our range because they can use our towers and we can use their radio towers. So it extends that range. What this software does is just help with that efficiency, and I'll let Tony explain exactly what the software does.
So essentially, what we're doing is we're now live with Midland's corps. Now, we operate as the backup, so if something happens, it fails over, it fails over to us. But we need to make sure we have enough capacity to handle everybody. Right now, Midland's handling everybody. When we fail over, we have to have that capacity. We don't have that right now, and this is what that's going to give us. It's going to increase our capacity, so if something, it fails over to us, we can handle the workload of Odessa, Midland, and all the helper cities, right, that are on our system as well. And that's, this was not budgeted, but we're going to pay for it out of the internal IT fund, and then we're going to spread the cost out over five years. And we've talked to finance about it, so we have the cost. It's not going to come out of the general fund this year, and again, it'll come out of the internal fund. If there's anything specific you'd like to ask?
So what is the cost?
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, yeah, it's $382,005.
Tony, I have just a trivia one. In the fine print in there, it says, "Any necessary configurations or bandwidth or reallocation would be the customer's responsibility." So that would be our contractor, which would be Verizon, to handle the corps.
Who's our contractor? Motorola?
Or MCA? Yeah, we have, so this would be, this is through Motorola, and we contract out through MCA to help us do any of this type of work.
Okay.
Very good. Any other, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, number five, discuss the 2025-26 budget for emergency communication district for Ector County. Chief Kirk.
So every area that is served by 911 has an emergency communication district. I am the city's representative on that, on our board here locally. This simply, what you have in front of you is simply their budget for this year. The city does not provide any funds to this board. They, they come by their funds through taxes on cell phones and landlines and that sort of thing. That's their funding source. And basically, it's, their budget stays pretty, pretty much the same every year. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer it for you.
Where are they housed? Are they out at Terminal?
No, they're actually there on Seventh Street, about Seventh and Jackson.
Well, there's, yeah, there's the Emergency Communications Building out at Terminal. I didn't know what that was. It's huge.
Yeah, yes.
Emergency Response, it says.
I believe that's a City of Midland building.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
I just didn't know if it's the same or not. Anyway, big building. Okay.
It's that red brick building over.
Yeah, it's just huge. Never any cars there.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? One more, discuss approving the purchase of the Aimpoint SCRO sites and holsters for officers' handguns.
Now, we're a little backwards on this because I think in regular council tonight, we'll review a contract wherein we are changing handguns. We're moving away from the SIG 320s and going to the Smith and Wesson MMP9. Couple reasons for that. So our SIGs are 40 caliber. About 80% of all the ammunition made in the United States even more is nine millimeter, so it's much easier to get nine millimeter. If you believe FBI data, the best nine-millimeter rounds equal the effectiveness of the best 40-caliber rounds and possibly even 45-caliber rounds. So we feel comfortable that we're not, we're not sacrificing quality by moving to these guns. We had a shoot-off. I've always been a Glock guy, I've got to admit. But with our shoot-off, I liked the MMP better. Most of the officers like the MMP better than the Glock. Now, let's also talk about the SIG. The SIG has had some issues. There have been multiple lawsuits with the SIG, this particular SIG firearm. So we've decided to not even, we didn't even test it as far with the nine-millimeter because we're moving away from the SIG 320 model. And I've got the model, so you can see what the sight, the gun and the sights look like.
So they've got sights on there?
This is the sight.
Oh, okay.
And that's the handgun.
That's a Glock.
This is the Smith and Wesson.
Smith and Wesson.
They can pass it through.
It's all right. I don't like guns.
Great exchange. Absolutely, great exchange.
Okay.
I just think it's whatever the guys like.
Yeah, and I would say probably 80% of them were able to do the test fires.
They liked them better.
They did, yeah. And I really believe the reason they liked it better because it shoots very similar to the SIG that we have now.
Okay.
Chief, who manufactures the red dot?
It is Aimpoint. Yes, Aimpoint. And this cost will be, and it's not just for the Aimpoints, but it's for the leather, the new holsters, for the new pistols, all those types of things. So that entire cost is $124,043. And that's not budgeted, but we're looking to spend seizure, drug seizure funds for that.
Cool. Okay. So we'll come back next meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
Sounds good to me.
So is that on the next meeting? But because it does say approve the purchase of the sites and holster, so.
Still got to come up for two weeks then for us to prove it.
Normally, what, what, normally what happens is you make the presentation and work session, and then you approve it at your next meeting. That way, council has two weeks, ask any questions, get more information. That seems to be the process.
Right.
Just, just, very good. Very good. All right, Chief, thank you so much. All right, number seven, Ms. Shonse, discuss the proposed 19-mile scope of improvement to the city's underground stormwater infrastructure. Project targets high priority areas in need of maintenance to prevent system failures and ensure continued compliance with regulatory requirements. City will assess 19 miles of stormwater infrastructure using television inspection and GPS mapping. Ms. Shonse.
Good afternoon. So this piece is just informational for today. We will be coming in two weeks with a quote that we are reviewing right now. So let's start. So our stormwater system, it's the infrastructure that helps us control flooding and pollutants throughout our city. And with our program, we are able to pretty much help mitigate some of it. So this is all rainwater that flows off of impervious surfaces in our city. Unlike moist water, it's usually, it's always untreated, so therefore, we care how it's going into our outfalls. Our city has three different outfalls, and as you can tell in the map, they're all located in the south area. How this came about was that there was, through EPA, they had a new law that allowed for cities that if they wanted to collect fees from your water bill in order to help mitigate this, you could. So our city adopted this in 2009. As part of that, we have different tiers. Residentials will go from $1.85 to $2.25. And for industrial or commercial, it's going to be different, and the rates are going to be a little bit higher. These funds can only be used in order to maintain, to improve or help with the pollutants of our stormwater drainage. So why we're here today is because we're part of what is considered MS4, which our city is now, we're technically on level three, but we're pretty much at the borderline of that, and we're about to be level four, which would mean that we would be regulating more of the industrial surfaces and runoffs that's happening there. So our system hasn't really been scoped since it got installed. This year, I think I've come to you guys a couple of times. Some of our buildings are built on our drainage easements. We had a vehicle that went through one of the pavements, and so we're just trying to be proactive, kind of understand what the 19 miles is and how it's looking right now. So this will help us scope it, make sure that we're working with GIS and have an accurate mapping of our system. Just these two projects that were pretty much small cost us half a million dollars. So our goal is to be able to prevent us having to do emergency repairs and have more of a strategic plan and be able to plan and hopefully keep on growing on the program and be able to do a lot more.
The photo you're showing right now?
Yes.
Is that where we have underground drainage?
Correct.
Okay, let me ask you this. Maybe next, when you come the next two weeks or whatever we're discussing, can you have a map of where our drainage system is and where it flows to?
Yeah, well.
That's what this does.
That's what this is.
That's what this is right here.
If you zoom in, you would be able to go and look exactly how it navigates, but like, remember this, those outfalls, that's where it's going to. That's where everything will end up at.
So where does our water, where does everything end up at?
Here, Monahills.
Monahills draw. I still like a map.
Sure, I mean, I'll have to work with it.
Especially.
We can probably make it interactive so we can get into our maps so you can see.
Especially in my district, because I think it has probably the oldest drainage system
Honestly, it's all, 90% of it is in your district.
And my biggest, my biggest thought, or what I want to know is, when have we ever went underground and cleaned it so it's a better flow through it?
That's why we're doing this, because I wouldn't be able to give you that.
I don't think we ever have.
I don't think we have. It's more like mitigation or repairs, like emergencies, that's when we actually get into something.
I'm pretty sure there's plenty of tumbleweeds in there.
Even the erosion of, you know, we, if you see, you know, these are areas, you can see that it's overgrown, so we have to be maintaining all of this, canals and everything.
Just a little map for you.
Sure.
You don't have to give it to Thompson, he knows what I don't like. Just give me one.
I saw it there.
We actually have videos too, so you can kind of see.
I like the maintenance of that when you're saying, is that, would that be stormwater's responsibility?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, but usually we get help.
Right now on our outfalls, we're getting help from Streets, because Streets is the ones who are cleaning the outfalls and the drainage channels.
Wait, she seems to come up, can't hear her.
Yeah.
We're streaming live.
So Streets is the one that helps us. They help us maintain the outfalls.
And what is your name?
Monica.
Monica, she's in my.
Are you over stormwater?
Yes, sir.
We need to have a visit.
Yes, sir. So what I was stating was Streets is our resource. They are the ones managing and cleaning and maintaining all of our outfalls, drainage channels in the outfalls. So we are putting them on the schedule for inspection as need be.
Well, we need to have a visit, and I'm not going to hold a meeting up, because I want to know, I need you to explain to me how somebody has a company, and because they wash in their truck and it runs off into the street, how that stormwater.
Because.
I mean, we, that's what I want to know, okay?
So everything runs through the city. Everything that's in the city, everybody that's responsible.
Right.
Is residential, commercial, and industrial. We all play a role. Everything that drains from your property goes somewhere, through the streets.
Well, I'm just a dummy. When you say stormwater, I'm just looking for rain or storm.
It's not just rain.
And then when you, because you're getting into like some of the oil companies that have runoffs or something.
So that, yeah, so the more impervious coverage you have, which is the pavement, anything covering the natural land surface is considered runoff. So the more you have, the more fee you pay, the more that you contribute to runoff.
So we have the right, we need to talk. I'm not going to hold you up. I'm just saying, we have the right to go in and tell somebody to have to tear their whole pavement up.
Oh, yeah, so part of stormwater program is that you have to control your runoff, which is contaminants, pollutants, or anything that can enter our drainage system, trash, oil, any type of runoff.
Look at the top.
Yeah. So we do enforce that as well.
Okay.
And so the inspection's just for maintenance, not about adding capacity or any?
No, well, they'll give us a point, like, they're going to tell us at what stage it's at. Is it working? Are the slopes okay, are they not? Do we, that kind of inventory is what we're after. And then once we have the data, then we can start being strategic about what is going to be our plan to fix and maintain. High priority areas, yeah.
Any other questions?
Elizabeth, just for clarification for everyone, if you took the stormwater infrastructure that we have, how many miles do we have in the city?
So we have 19 miles.
So the 19 is calling the hotel then? It's not a targeted?
And that's underground, but then you go into the detention of retention basins, that is also mitigation for runoffs.
So you're looking at the whole thing? That's wonderful.
Right now, we're just looking at the underground infrastructure, then we're going to go into those, because those are a whole other issue. It's more the maintenance erosion. It gets most of the, I'm going to say 50% of the time to maybe 80% of the time, they're donated to the city, then it becomes the city's problem. Like we said, Streets helping us a lot to maintain all of this, so it's, it's going to be, once we have a plan, we can better assess, is it better to stay with our Streets department, or is it better to just hire somebody else to maintain them?
Thank you.
Elizabeth, along those lines, you know, I know it exists, but for ongoing maintenance, is there not a system that we can buy, rent, whatever? You know, like a lot of the pipelines, they run a pig through there to make sure it's clean, there's no obstructions. We're not doing any of that?
We're, right now, we're not doing any of that. Right now, we're reactive. So it's until we have an issue, we're doing something, and we can no longer be doing that. So that's why we're starting off with taking inventory, what's really there, assessing it, and then creating our plan.
Yeah. But, yeah, so there's plenty of technology to run stuff through there to clean those out.
Yes. And we'll evaluate that, is it, is it better to go with a third party? Is it better to do it in-house? Because the funds are there, and we want to make sure that we're keeping up with our infrastructure.
Yeah. It's better than having to replace it, that's for sure.
Yes.
If possible. I think that's, I'm glad you're addressing that. It's always a problem.
Yes.
Because the drains don't drain fast enough, and I'm sure that a lot of them have probably got trash in them.
And a lot of it has to do that, when they were installed, we didn't have the population that we have today.
No.
So obviously, there needs to be a review of it and review of the design as well.
Well, we didn't have as much concrete as we have now.
Correct.
We do have a lot of our stormwater runoff that runs down the curb and gutter, right? It's not all underground.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, we have underground, out of the ground.
Yes.
Our streets are, usually are, are channels.
Yes, right, just to clarify.
Yes.
Canal system.
Right. And I know at least over District Two, we're catching a lot of it, all this new development they're having, we're making them dig retention ponds to catch a bunch of that because of all the, we've got so much more pavement, concrete than we've had, and it all runs right down Fodry, so from all the, from Parksville all the way to Play on the other side of 80, so. I think it'd be, it's worthy, it's a worthy task, I think.
And at one point, there was a discussion, the county was doing flood mitigation study.
They are, so we're, who we're talking to is who they're also working with. So that's one of the reasons why we also like them, just because then we're kind of, in a way, talking the same language.
Very good. Any other questions on the stormwater?
Be interested to see what you come up with on going maintenance. That's a big, big deal, I think.
Sure, all right. Number eight, discuss the purchase of two Ford F-150 vehicles for stormwater to support maintenance and operational needs. Ms. Shonse.
Okay, thank you again. So for this one is just bringing it up, because we will be coming in two weeks with, I guess, a bid in order to purchase two vehicles that we're needing for our department. Currently, we're sharing vehicles, and between my divisions, we figure out the vehicle, but it's, as we're, since you guys are being so nice and giving us more staff, obviously, we're going to need those vehicles. And we do have the funds available, they're there. We've been, I gave you guys a packet that has some quotes in there. It's looking like Sewell, as, even though it might be a little bit more. They're local, they're here, and we need them, so it's looking more going towards that direction.
I want to buy those out of Colorado, personally.
Is there a reason why we're just sticking with Ford and not Chevrolet, not Dodge? Dodge makes, Dodge makes these, so does Chevrolet.
I will have to defer that. Sorry. I don't, I just get quotes.
No, no, no reason, no reason to do that.
Because I think you could probably get a cheaper Dodge, and you probably get a cheaper Chevrolet that you can't afford.
Right.
And so we're not being frugal with our, putting these out to everybody. There's other companies in this town that could go after some of this business.
Good comment.
But it's, Laura, it's posted. I mean, the Ram dealership could pick it up, and anybody could pick it up. It's not like we're doing it in secret. It's posted. Their just fleet departments are probably a little lazy. They wanted to sell some trucks, they could get on the website and submit a bid, I would suggest.
I was just asking, was a question.
Yeah, we're not sold on Ford.
It wasn't an argument.
I don't mean it as an argument either, I'm just saying, it's a public bid. Jeep wanted to bid on it, they could, or anybody else.
So you think the 150s are big enough, since that's a stormwater department, you don't think a 250 would be more efficient for them?
Well, we, that's what we were discussing earlier.
I mean, we don't want to buy something too small when it got to get stuck with you.
Right, and we changed it to a 4x4.
We got stuck a lot, so usually get strewn to come.
I mean, because in stormwater, you may have to pick a rock or something up and carry it somewhere, you know, a load of dirt.
That's why they make dump trucks, brother.
Well, they not going to die, dump trucks, I don't think they need dump trucks, and we don't get into that, but I just think a 250 would be more efficiency for what their department is.
Whatever you would like.
We have a budget, so as long as we can fit it within the budget, that's what.
All right.
Elizabeth, do you need the, you need the vehicles, but I'm asking about retrofitting. Is there anything additional to those for serving the purpose and the need? Retrofitting the vehicles with?
With efforts. With, with the lights, and that's my thing.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're doing all of that as well. We have the lights, the toolbox, and I can't remember what else that are, but, yep.
So the answer is you have to fit your own?
Yes, yes, they do it.
That's what I'm saying. Laura's people do, yeah, got you. They don't have to go anywhere, okay?
Right.
Well done.
Correct, it's in-house, yes.
We're just moving this forward, or we?
It's just informational for you guys, and then we'll come in two weeks with the one that we select.
Okay, any other questions about the stormwater view?
They're budgeted and good, we'll see them back.
Okay. All right, number nine, update on the public improvement district for park development, enhancement, and ongoing maintenance for windmill crossing. The PID will fund the operations and maintenance and improvements that will benefit the area and use, and using special assessments.
So I decided to bring this one to you guys because a lot of you guys might, are new, may not know that we have a PID. So windmill crossing development, which is BMBO development, it has a PID, which is an improvement district. This district was created to, this includes beautification, utilities, state administration, replacement service accounts, safety and security, insurance, and other descriptions that are in the resolution. But every single year, you're going to see that we're going to come to you for an assessment that we need to do. So we need to, every year, we're going to have to levy and collect the property taxes, the additional property taxes for this. This is the original one that, when we first came in to the bid, to the PID, this was the original PID. And throughout this year, we've had some modifications, like the image that, this image is something that they put at the entryway of their subdivision, so they're installing our, the maintenance for that and repair if somebody drives to it. The goal is that it's not a liability for the city or an expense for the city as well. So this is all of the fees that is collected. Obviously, right now, BMBO is the one that if something were to happen, they're the ones that are taking the responsibility until the funds are sufficient enough in order for it to be self-sustainable. So today, we're not, this was another area that changed. Uh, so today, uh, we're not, this was another area that changed, um, right next to the Playa. Uh, they had a drill site, the drill site got, um, abandoned, so they a- added more, um, housings to that area. So that's more, uh, taxes that are coming, and more revenue that's also going into this account. We are partnered with P, um, P Three Works. Um, they're the ones that administrate everything, they're the ones that do everything for us. So today, we're not asking, uh, for you guys to do anything. It's just to let you know that on September, uh, ninth, we will be having a public meeting for this. They will be here, and they will be able to answer any questions that you guys may have at that time. But in the meantime, I'm here if you guys have any questions.
So, so the original playa, is it being used or not?
So.
They scrapped that, didn't they?
So what they're gonna be doing with the playa, I don't know if John, do you know what they're doing with the playa? From what I know, they were just gonna do some disco, um.
John, if you'll, if you'll come up, please.
The, the last discussion that we had, the playa was gonna be a native area. A, a drain, uh, basically a retention basin.
But the boundary is a walking trail.
Yeah, I knew that. I just knew there was some discussion about it.
Is that the one that's right around the corner from them, that, that nobody maintains? That it just sits out there with all the weeds growing up, and everything's grown up around, out there?
I have not seen.
No, this one's just now getting finished.
This is not finished yet, it has not been developed. So we've only done like half of this, so they're still working on the other half.
Okay, well, BMBO had another one where they just left all of this to native out there, and it's all grown up out there. There's a pond that's supposed to be in the middle of this that, that holds water, but everything's grown up now. All the residents are using it for a, uh, basically riding all of their.
So, let me look at that one, I don't know which, this is completely different, so that might be a different subdivision, we can look into it. And if it has an HOA, which I'm almost a hundred percent sure that they do have an HOA, it would be an HOA that we would have to reach out to and ask them to.
Councilman, what are you talking about? I'm sorry, I don't know where.
Right behind, right on Ninety First Street, all of that, there's a whole big old cleared-out area that never got developed down there, but it's got a pond, city, for the runoff out of the, uh, all of those houses that are in the Ninety First area, Eighty-Ninth, Eighty-Seventh Street.
Oh, that's, that's a natural playa, that's been there for a thousand years. That's just a natural playa, that was never man-made.
Good.
Yeah, they built, they built all those homes around it, and so that was just original buffalo.
I didn't know anything about that one, but did, were they supposed to maintain that, or no?
No.
Or is the city supposed to maintain?
I don't know, but the, that's something.
We can look into it.
Yeah, but those homes are, that street runs all the way around.
Yep.
All the way around that playa, and they're building around it, but it, it's, it's not a PID, I know that.
This neighborhood has, uh, they have several parks, there's a few different pocket parks, as well as, uh, two bigger parks. Uh, and we are working on, uh, quotes for it to have a contractor maintain those areas.
Yeah, we're trying not to put it on our staff.
Yeah. But, yeah, it shouldn't be.
Yep.
PID's supposed to take care of it, right?
Yes.
It's the way we understood it.
Yes.
When we did it. But, uh, I'm like Mr. Honey, I'd like to step, is it big old, I mean, it's really big.
It's huge, I mean, you, we could.
I've seen it for a thousand years.
It could be developed into something pretty nice over there, so.
Well, and that's the whole, that's where we want to get with stormwater, is let's fix our infrastructure, let's have a maintenance plan, then we can start working on projects.
Okay, so, basically, this is stormwater that's gonna wind up?
No, that's a, that's a, uh, it's probably, where is, your bomb? It's, I, I would have to look at it and see if it's part of the floodway.
I think it's gonna be stormwater that's winding up into this, this holding basin there. It's not going anywhere but into that holding basin, so.
So we can look into it with public works.
Just, just, just a question, uh, for this PID, the payers of the PID assessments, that's gonna be the homeowners and anyone else?
No, they don't have a homeowner, so instead of having a homeowners association, we have a PID. So that's a, a small percent that is on the, like, so it's part of their property taxes, but it's an additional, uh, percentage that goes to it.
Okay, it'll go out individually, you're saying then?
So, and that's what we were trying to work on, ideally, we would want it to be collected through, uh, the appraisal district. But we were not able to accomplish that this year, so we're gonna have a third party that's gonna be collecting. Again, this, all the funds for that third party is part of this PID, so that, ha, that, all that money comes from the PID.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the, on the PID? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number ten, the update on upcoming waterline project, Mr. Rowley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Temp and Council. Uh, the Utilities Department would like to update you on the current, uh, upcoming waterline project. Um, earlier this week, we initiated a waterline project in District Five, um, and this, uh, this waterline replacement is approximately twenty-one hundred feet of six-inch cast iron. Uh, the line was installed in nineteen, in seventy-seven, and has an approximately twelve line breaks between two thousand nine and last year. Uh, this project will also include the relocation of two fire hydrants. Um, they currently, if you can see in the picture, run under, or in between houses. We're going to relocate those and put them at the end of the streets. Um, and then, we're also going to add another hydrant that is on the west side, that will a, also give us, uh, fire protect, the fire protection on the, on that north side street. The cost of this replacement is within our utility job order contract, uh, and the total estimate for this, with a ten percent contingency, is five hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. This project is the last portion of the master plan on, in this neighborhood. Uh, this whole neighborhood was in our rehabilitation of the master plan in twenty nineteen, uh, which then connects directly to the waterline replacement, uh, on County Road West that we currently have a hundred percent plans for, we should be taking the bid this month.
Please get that one done before they start paving out.
We, we are still a hundred percent in, um, the timeline that Tech Dot has sent. Uh, we have been in communication with them throughout the project, so we're still, we're still in that, yes, sir.
I know they're still far, they said July, oh, what are we, August?
Yes, sir.
They're not gonna do it already, when they gonna do it?
They, they do tend to put it out in August, that is, their intention is to put it out in August.
Okay.
Time frame?
For this project, it should be six weeks, six to seven weeks.
Pretty darn good.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions? Questions on the waterline replacement? Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al.
Number eleven, discuss an update on the water back billing. Mr. Solfio.
Good afternoon, Council. Uh, on our billing software update was, will you pull up the first? Uh, in our billing software, there was an issue identified in the Munis billing software that caused accounts with unread consumption to be assigned incorrect usage values. This happened due to failure in the extraction process designed to exclude no-read accounts from billing. As a result, these accounts were built using inaccurate data. The errors have been corrected, all affected accounts will now be read manually until the system's full functionality is restored and all accounts are properly processed through our meter, meter reading software. Uh, there was a little, there was about fifteen hundred accounts that were affected. Uh, we've identified all of them, and we're manually reading those until we can get those processed, which will take a little over a month for them to go through the billing process.
Was this scattered throughout the city, or just in one area?
It hit two main areas, which was Parksville Ranch, uh, Longdale, and then some were scattered. They're mainly new builds, uh, new houses that were affected. And they lasted, some of them lasted six months, some were a year, that we didn't have accurate consumption.
Well, you must be doing a pretty good job, because I haven't had many calls.
What's that?
Said, you must be doing a pretty good job solving them, because I haven't had any calls.
We attempted to, well, we sent letters out, and we attempted to call as many as we could before we billed the, the last batch. But, uh, we're on it, my staff is, is.
Well, I appreciate your, appreciate your hard work, because I'd, like I said, I just had one, about ten days ago, I guess, the one I really, besides Aaron's. Assistant City Manager.
And, and that's how, that's how we ended up finding these accounts, was through Aaron's account. Not tall enough.
Thank you.
Any questions, any?
So, oh, well.
Do you wanna let them speak, or?
Well, let me, uh, did, I don't know, do we do cards on speakers, I don't know?
I do have a speaker card for Mr. Irving.
Okay, can we get a speaker card, and then we'll do speakers that, after we're finished, so? Uh, so on the, the software, I know, I think Mr. Smith or Mr. Vela said that y'all had been to College Station to look at what they were using?
We will be there on the twentieth of this month. Uh, there go, they went from Munis to Origin, so that's, uh, we're going to go look and see how that works, and IT will be accompanying us.
And so that? Like, because I'm trying to figure out, what, what's the difference in this and what happened to me? Where, like, the digit in there was a number off, and so?
In, in your case, which was the old system, is Badger Meter used what they call resolutions. Your house has a two-inch meter, but the resolution that was put on yours was for a one-inch meter. And when we made that, uh, manual read, is when we noticed it was five dollars versus four dollars. Uh, it's, it's happened before, uh, this is not new, uh, it just hit, I think, fifteen hundred at one time versus scattered out through months. But, yeah, it's kind of the same thing, it's just, on this part, the software did not kick out an extraction saying, I don't have a reading. It gave it a consumption. It gave it a number that we don't know where they were coming from. And that's what made it so difficult to, to find.
And it was Munis that did that?
Correct.
Hmm. Alright. But you've got all of them identified and?
Yes, sir.
Figured out?
Yeah, and then we scrubbed all forty-five thousand accounts, one by one, to make sure we didn't leave any out, so.
Thanks for your hard work, I know it wasn't easy.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, guests, appreciate you.
I, I do have just one question, though, I, I think I did learn a new bad word, and it was called back billing.
Yes, sir.
Do you foresee this happening again, from this point forward?
It's hard for me to answer that.
The software connections, you've seen.
I'm hoping we caught everyone, but for me to say it won't happen again?
Yeah, I realize that.
I think the software doesn't have the capability to catch everything, uh, and I think that's why we're really looking to go outside to a different one that will be able to help us.
Uh-huh.
So for me to say, I, I couldn't answer that.
And the only reason I ask is you want our citizens to, to get their mail, get their water bill, and not be afraid to open it up, you know? It should be realistic as to the actual draw of water.
Correct, yes, sir, yes. So.
But thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Tommy Irving? Speakers ha, are reminded that they have three minutes to speak.
And that's it?
That's it.
That's it?
Geez.
No, it's work session, though.
Tommy Urban, born in Nectar County Hospital in nineteen fifty-three, and been here pretty much ever since. Um, I'm a responsible master plumber for Urban Plumbing, a ninety-one-year-old company. Uh, I've been there since nineteen sixty-two. I helped, uh, or rode my bicycle up north of town and watched that old water treatment plant being built. I was involved with the Bob Derrington plan as it's been built. Um, I've been involved with the city on municipal stuff, uh, running Nectar County Utility District for about eight years. And I've seen yours, I've seen the meter issues firsthand, and, and it's been ugly for years. The city's had meter issues for over fifteen years that I know of, and I didn't pay a whole lot of attention, except for, my granddaughter called me, and she said, GT, they billed me for forty thousand more gallons of water than what we used. And they got a sprinkler system, okay? So our deal is, is when folks call us and say, hey, we got a water leak, city says we got something going on, this, that, and other stuff, well, the, the ladies at the office down there, they just have a generic answer, it's a flapper in your toilet, or your sprinkler valve's leaking, or something, this, that, and other stuff. So what we finally did is say, okay, call out the Utilities Department, and I give them the, the office number out there. At that time, it was Tommy, he'd say, have the guys come out there and just read the meter, and, and the Building Department will fix it. So, I think that, in my opinion, you ask all to go, is this gonna rise again? Yes. There, there are some issues that's going on that date way back, that I think are still affecting the system as it is today. Okay? Now, the master meters that's in today, and we got a couple of leaks on some customers, are very, very accurate. I mean, I, I love that master meter, okay? And I checked on them to see backgrounds, and this, that, and other, and, and I believe this, that the meters you have today are, are about as good as you can get. Okay? Now, the software package to read them and to build it out, that's a, that's ugly. And you guys in the Building Department have a really rough time of finding a software package that actually is gonna work. And, and I believe that, once you start looking at them, if you guys would make sure that, like Waco, or Conroe, or somebody that has Tyler, that has these type of meters, and see what kind of problems that they may be having today, so y'all don't inherit those issues, and let those other cities that's already been through here take care of them. Again, I've been in the water, been around this water issues for years. Uh, I did the, the Sweetwater Waterwell projects back in the nineties, been doing this for a while. Anyway, um, other than that, um, I think your Building Department, i- i- as Steve said, are, are working their tails off to make this happen, because y'all don't need the phone calls, y'all got enough issues as it is. Anyway, that's what I'm doing, and if I can help in any way, got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
Jane, Jingan?
Jane Jung.
Yes, yes. Please come forward, you'll have, and state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Jane Jung, um, I'm the owner of Willow Brand Apartments. Um, I'm here to, um, actually wanna grab, ask a question to, uh, was it Director of Building and the Collection Department? Because, uh, we experienced high water bills since the new water, new smart water, water meter was installed. Um, so first, we checked our property for any leak, but we didn't detect anything. But the, uh, the water meter, the water usage went up dramatically, it's from fifty thousand gallon to ninety-one thousand gallon, to one forty-three ga, a thousand gallon, to one seventy-one thousand gallon. So that means for twenty-three one-bedroom apartments, each unit spent, uh, consumed seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five gallon per month. My family have an eighteen, eighteen hundred square feet house, five people with two dogs, big yard. We only consume five thousand per gallon, and that's only one bedroom, five hundred square feet. Now, I contacted Customer Service, I asked to verify the accuracy of the water meter, and request to, um, adjust the water bill, but, uh, the supervisor I talked to, the Customer Service, Alyssa, she just sent a technician by and do the one-time on-site rea, uh, on-site meter reading, and then do one more, um, same day, as a remote reading, and told me, meter was, was, was working fine, meter was cal, uh, calibrated before installation. I told her, can I verify the accuracy of the water meter? Because under the Texas Administrative Code, utility, water utility including CEO, desert, must allow customer requests accurate test of their water meter. I have the right to verify if it's accurate, because the number is not reasonable. I believe city has, um, special tool, not just do two readings and tell me the meter is accurate. They have a suitcase, why can't I use a suitcase? Looks like she put needed further, I don't know, further, more, uh, supervised. I don't know, further, more, uh, supervisor to tell her to do the, but I don't know, but. I just want to ask the city, what options the city offer to solve the high water bill issues? Because we cannot solve the problem and it's not reasonable for us to, to consume one seventy-one thousand gallon water. It's not reason, and then they can't say all their account are properly solved. So I say it's not, it's not right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vayler, could we visit with her?
Of course.
After and see about either taking the suitcase out or whatever we need to do to verify that meter.
We're glad to do that. No problem.
Thank you.
So we haven't been out there to test it for you?
Counsel, we have one more speaker, Jim Fletcher.
My name is Jim Fletcher. I live in fifteen nineteen Pagewood. I will, kind of like Tommy, I was born here in nineteen forty-seven, uh, before there was a hospital. I've been here a long time. What you said, I wasn't going to say a word about any of this until what you said. I received my water bill August eleventh for fifty-six thousand gallons of water. I'm the only person in my house. The meter is accurate? Okay, I don't believe that, but okay. But if the, if the meter's accurate, then the previous month when I used three thousand gallons, was that accurate? Because fifty-six thousand gallons of water, I have a swimming pool that holds fourteen thousand gallons of water. I could fill it up four times. I didn't. So there's something wrong somewhere, either the software or something else. You got a problem because you can't send me a bill for fifty-six thousand gallons of water when there's no way I can use that. So I went to my shop and I bought a three-hundred gallon tote home. I've been involved in water for a long time and I timed it to see how long it took. It took forty minutes to fill up three hundred gallon tote. Forty minutes. That would be thirty-six totes a day, ten thousand gallons more or less a day. Five days of filling up totes for fifty-six thousand gallons of water. That's crazy. There's no way. I'm just telling you. I talked to the gentleman. The meter's supposed to be accurate. That's what you use. I'm calling BS on it. I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is. There's just no way. That's all I was going to say. When you said, when you opened your bill up, you got to be able to trust this, you know, Odessa? Man, fifty-six thousand gallons of water was a lot of water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro temp, can I say something?
Yes.
Well, I just kind of wanted to say since the meter's here, we got a full house, uh, here today and, and to Mayor Pro temp and counsel. It's unfortunate situation. Uh, we're, we're sorry that it happened. We take full responsibility. We've been meeting with some folks as, as they're calling to set up meetings. We're, we're happy to do that if anybody's out there that wants to meet with staff about this issue. We're, we're glad to sit down with them and discuss the issue, try to work out arrangements. We are in the process of, of working out arrangements. We've done our best to try to communicate with everybody. We've sent out letters to those affected. Trying to detail what happened from our perspective and give them opportunities to, to work this out over a twelve-month payback period. You know, like I said, we, we do take full responsibility for what happened and we do apologize to, to everybody out in the community who, who this has affected. We understand that this is a, a, a serious issue and we regret that it happened, but we, we do want to sit down with you all if, if you feel the need to and try to, try to resolve these issues and make sure that it doesn't happen again. This is a, a learning experience for us and, uh, you know, we do feel that we have, uh, have learned something from it. To our staff, you know, they, they've done an excellent job in responding, Rogelio and, and Joanne. In particular, our staff downstairs as well. They've, they've really worked their tails off as Councilman Thompson has, has mentioned. So if there's anything that we can do for the community that's been affected, please let us know. We're happy to sit down with you. We're happy to take phone calls. Just to try to get these issues resolved and, uh, and try to move forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Vett, I have one question. Is this, is this all tied back to the Munis system? It seems like every time we turn around, the Munis system's not doing what it, I mean, I don't know when it was bought or who, it doesn't matter. I mean, that's all in the past. We have to deal with what we have now, but I don't know. Is it antiquated? Does it not do what it's supposed to do or we have to jury-rig it to get it to do what it needs to do?
It, it's, it's really, it really is. It really is. And so that's why we're looking at, at another type of software system. Like Rogelio said, that they're, they're headed down to College Station, which is using uh, another type of system, the kind of Oracle s- system. Uh, they're using that down in College Station. So we're going to meet with the College Station folks to see how that, you know, how they like it or the pros and cons of using that Oracle-based system. Try to get some feedback from them. Uh, it, it would take about a year before we make a decision or when we make a decision before, uh, it would take twelve months basically to get set up here in Odessa. So it's a long process, but, uh, but one that, you know, once we pull the trigger, it would take about a year to get set up here.
It seems like every time we turn around, when, when, how old was that Munis system? Do we have any idea, Tony? Where's Tony? Oh, there were the other ones. Oh, there's Tony. Twenty twenty-one?
Any update, Tony?
And they're capped out, we're capped out at fifty thousand accounts?
Not to max it out.
It's time, it's time, yeah.
And, and the process was at the beginning when we were asked to move. We voiced that you're taking us back seven years from where we were and it wasn't going to help, it wasn't going to work for us. And here we are. That was brought up and, but we were still told this is the direction we needed to go.
Yeah, we, we, we forced the issue. Building Collections did voice their, they said it wasn't going to work for them and they're proven right. It's not working for them. Um, it was kind of just, um, my philosophy is I work with the department, but they dictate what they need because they know how they want to operate. So I shouldn't dictate to them to go to some system. And this is, this is proof, right?
Yeah.
It's a disaster. Um, it really just, it seems like Munis does finance really well, but they don't do this. So we wanted to go to all to one system. And when I say we, I wasn't part of that decision-making plan, but that was the plan, was to go everything to go to one system because they just assumed that it would, um, integrate better, right? Well, that's just not true. So we need to find someone who does water billing and that's all they do, right? And that's what they do best. And, and we think we found it. We're going to go to College Station. I believe Lubbock uses them as well. Both of them have said the system's really great. Um, it's an enterprise system, so you know, it's, it's going to be the Michael Jordan of, we're, we're moving away from, you know, just, it can function to like, okay, it's supposed to be robust and the reporting, I mean, we can't even, um, get good reports through this system. So it, it's been, it's just time to move on.
Well, it just seems like every time we have some kind of, you know, issue, it always circles back to the software system.
Yeah, and that's.
At least, at least the time I've been here.
Yeah. And that's what we have to avoid is trying to force a fit. Like we, we need to make sure other cities say, yeah, this, because if you talk about the billing collection portion to other cities about Munis, they say the same thing. They don't like it, right? I mean, it's, it's finance, they, everybody has positive things to say. They see, um, cities seem to enjoy, like it, but if you talk to, some of them just quit mid-implementation and just walked away from it and just that dead money and found a new system, so it's, it hasn't been good for most of it.
Sounds like we're at that point.
Yeah, well, and I think, uh, in our conversation about it, there was an open work order taken for two years.
It's still there.
Still there. I hope it's, it's three years now. Can't even get them to show up and service their own product. I mean, but, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on number eleven? All right, number twelve, to present financial statements for the city's enterprise funds.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor Pro temp and council. As promised, we are producing financial statements better and more regularly. Kaylee's passing up what we did this, this month. I want to show you what was done previously. This pocket was previously done for the city every month. This is a lot of information and I don't know that y'all are going to want all this information, but the plan going forward is every month, we are going to provide you with what we've already provided you, but updated, plus a new report every month. So if there's something specific you're wanting, please let Mr. Vayler or Mr. Smith know and we'll get it on there for you. Today, we have the Water and Sewer Fund and the Solid Waste Fund. I chose these because these are enterprise funds and so they're a little bit different than the general fund that we normally talk about. These are run more as business-type funds, but we still do apply the GAAS, the Governmental Accounting Standards to them. So if you look at the water sewer first, um, the way this is set up is the first column is your current year budget and it's whatever changes have been made to the budget have been accounted for here. Then you have your year-to-date as of July twenty twenty-five, your remaining budget, your percent of budget that has either been collected or expended, because the first page is revenues, the second page is expenditures. And then, um, y'all, this council had expressed wanting to compare year over year. So we went ahead and provided your July of twenty twenty-four numbers as well and showed, showed y'all the variances there. So the Water and Sewer Fund shows all the revenues that we collect. The only revenue, if you're just looking at the differences of year over year, that looks different is Pioneer. Pioneer has taken a little bit less water this year and unless they have some, uh, clawback credits on their account that they can use, we will get the eleven point five million, I believe, by the end of the year unless they have some credits to apply. So we will get that revenue. It's just they don't have to pay it until the end. And as y'all have seen recently, our interest income is much better than what we've anticipated in budget season, simply because of the way the economy is now. You'll see the next line that will tell you your total water sewer operations revenues. Again, budgeted, actuals, remaining and year-to-date collected. There's another line that'll show you rollover prior year encumbrances. Whenever, especially on the larger accounts, whenever there are encumbrances or purchase orders that have not been fulfilled, those roll over to the next year. They do that because these projects are usually bigger projects and the money's already been accounted for in the budget. So we don't put it back in the fund balance, but we still row those over. That act essentially adds revenue to your current year. It's the same fund, but you're going to have those purchases in this year that's not out of your current year revenue. So that's why that line item's there. On the next page, it's just your expenditures, kind of the same setup, has your twenty-five revised budget, your year-to-date actual as of July twenty twenty-five, your encumbrances, remaining budget, and then again, a comparison year over year. The things that I noticed on this one, um, that looked a little different to me are the utility, utilities, admin and GIS account. You'll see that we have thirty-three percent more currently than we did this time last year. Honestly, the majority of that is because accounting is getting caught up. We're not as behind as we were. So all the internal charges and things like that are being captured more timely. That's the biggest difference. And then, of course, you do expect some increase year over year in that main fund. The next big increase you're going to see is on water repair and replace. Those are, uh, water lines, valves, hydrants, all the maintenance that Alex's team is doing to fix what's broken and to proactively prevent some accidents. That's where you'll see those funds. That's why that fund is increased. The next one you'll see that looks significantly different is Pioneer. Utilities is not spending that money as much this year because last year it was to finish up line queue. And so now they're trying to reserve as many funds as possible for the Darrington Plant. So I went through that kind of fast. Um, is there any questions on water and sewer? Is there anything you'd like to see different?
Well, I love the twenty-four, twenty-five comparisons and also the increase, decrease, um, compared year-to-date. That's just very beneficial.
Good, I'm glad.
Very nice.
And going through these reports, it helps, um, on from the finance side, get us much rather for, ready for audit much quicker because we're able to catch things now. Um, with, we've been able to increase our financial reporting because of the separation of duties that we've been able to kind of establish in finance. It's freeing me up more for audit and financials and that stuff. So we're, we're getting a rhythm. Uh, the next one, solid waste, the setup is the same. I'm going to try to keep the setup the same for every financial. That way it reads easy. Um, solid waste actually consists of solid waste, keep Odessa beautiful and a code enforcement division. The first thing that I noticed on this one was the recycles revenues. Looks like it's significantly down. So I did a little bit of research. It's not down. For some reason, it's getting coded in the wrong category, so I'll get that fixed. You'll see that property sales down there for the hundred and forty-nine thousand, that's actually recycling revenue. So we'll get that fixed. So that is in line with what you would expect. The other difference is the outside city limits. It looks like we just historically under budget for that. So I don't know why. I don't know the history behind that. Um, we will look at that, uh, and see why we do that. I'll go back over a few histories and it might just be we did.
Why are we outside the city limits?
I, Jesse can answer that better than I can.
Well, it's got to be, it's got to be industrial districts, I would think.
Is that our industrial districts?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have commercial accounts. We have commercial accounts.
Sorry, I thought that's what it.
That's what it had to be.
Sorry.
Thanks, Jesse. And then on the actual expenses, most of it looks in line. Um, solid waste has gone up, uh, gone up, but they received some new vehicles and so that increases their equipment services. But code enforcement went down a little bit more than solid waste went up, so I dug in a little bit there. And I really think some of the expenditures that should be hitting code enforcement are hitting solid waste. So I'm going to dig a little deeper into that, but that's what it looks like just on the surface.
Where are, where are the tipping fees?
The tipping fees are in the solid waste.
Where are they?
Um, they are, are those the roll-off charges, Jesse, the tipping fees? So it's in. Do you know which line item is on the tipping fees? I thought it was this one.
We've had a pretty good increase on those, I know, last year.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you're talking about on the expenses, on the expenses, expenses. Solid waste, that is in solid waste. I can tell you the increase over there. I don't have it broke down. But I did look at that and it wasn't significantly higher this time right now as it, over last year. It was more.
Yeah, last year was a big one.
But not significantly.
Yeah. I just know it was significant.
I remember seeing that. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. Is there anything y'all like to see different on these?
I think these are good.
And we will get you new ones?
I like them simple.
Me too.
Be sure, be sure the mayor gets those. He, he'll be very happy.
Yes, sir. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, thirteen, discuss the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
All righty. So hopefully by now you've all been provided a copy of the proposed budget. Um, I sent out the supplementals that go along with the budget. Um, if you don't have a hard copy of it, let us know and we'll get it to you. So just in quick summary, um, a lot of work has gone into this, so again, many thanks and gratitude to the people involved, the department heads and city management, of course, city council, for your efforts thus far. This year for fiscal year twenty-six, we are looking at, for the entire city, a revenue collection of three hundred and twenty-one point seven million dollars and that's across all of our funds. We are looking at a total operating expenditure figure of three hundred and nine point four million dollars, once again, across all of our funds. Um, in addition to that, we will be expending a one-time or supplemental, um, project expenditure of thirty-seven point six million dollars. So there were a couple of things to keep in mind as we were going through the selection for the supplementals. One of them, of course, is always the desire of council and your priorities and initiatives. So within this budget summary that you'll see in your book as you go through, one of the categories specifically under hotel motel, in the one-time cost, you will see five point six million dollars in, it's categorized as capital outlay slash replacement. That's the money that has been dedicated to the visitor center as well as the first-year interest expense for the sports complex. As we go through our audit process, our numbers for years that are not closed continue to be fine-tuned. And so as we were going through this supplemental process, we reassessed the figures and determined that the fund could handle both of those projects. And so those have been moved into the hotel motel fund for fiscal year twenty-six. Some other things that we kept in mind, finance and city management, as we went through this supplemental process, was number one, to ensure that we're maintaining our fund balance reserves properly. The second thing to consider was amongst all of the requests, we had to determine if they were one-time or ongoing and adjust our funding sources for that. So if it was a one-time expense, we could use things like excess revenues. If it was an increase in, in operations, then it was going to have to come from our revenues that we receive, our operating revenues. And you all know this, it's more for the public's sake than anything else. So that was another thing to keep in mind. As far as funding sources go, we did aim to utilize all of the excess bond funds from twenty nineteen that were outstanding from completed projects. So we reallocated or are proposing to reallocate approximately six point five million dollars of what was outstanding. There is still an additional five million dollars left outstanding, and some discussions have been had to utilize that as a, to go towards the sports complex expenditures, the owner's representative contract and things of that nature. So some of the big supplementals that we allocated funding to were things like personnel for the animal shelter. That was a big concern amongst council at council retreat. There were a couple of other departments that received some additional personnel. Let's see, fire station, a brand-new fire station is a, is a big one. And a lot of our remaining bond funds did go towards the funding of that fire station, fifteen million dollars total, just for the, the build and equipping of that. We also included things like the no-traffic mobility platform, which is going to make a lot of our operations on streets and things more efficient. So we're excited for that. There were a lot of really excellent requests. We took the direction of council. We took consideration of what funding sources we had, and we think that we have come up with a really excellent plan for fiscal year twenty-six. Still lots to do, but these are steps in the right direction across all of our departments. So we'll discuss the budget further at our next. We'll have a public hearing. We'll have, we still have to approve the budget and those kinds of things. But we did just want to update you on the supplemental process and the steps that we have made in that regard. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
I'd just like for the public to know that, because you, you mentioned it. So the seventy-five million that were taken for the sports complex are unused certificates of obligation that allow us to do that. So there's not any increase in taxes for that. I think that's very critical for people to know. And that these funds were sitting in our bank with, that we're paying interest on, that are not being utilized anywhere. So when finance got to digging around, we had a lot of loose cash that, which, this is going to help us really build a sports complex, basically for cash. So anyway, I think it's important for the public to know that, because I've heard some comments about, you know, what's going to happen to tax rate with the sports complex, and we're not anticipating anything. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that. It's, it's very important.
Agreed. We are basing everything on this book right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Nothing else, this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No way I can get rid of the other books I got.
Yes, sir. You sure can.
Thank you.
And then the supplementals that are in the packet.
In the ca, yes, in the packet.
So the pop quiz will be there after.
Call me if I can answer the questions.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
So any other
Thank you.
Budget supplemental questions? Very good. Thank you all very much. Fourteen, discuss boards and commissions appointments.
Council, we have several appointments coming up. And for your consideration for the Historic Preservation Commission, Roland Spickerman, he is, serves as historian, and that is required to serve on that board. He is willing to serve again. David Vincent, who serves as an architect, another requirement to serve on the board, is willing to serve again. There is a vacancy on the board, and Jimmy Peacock, who is an attorney, is willing to serve on that board. And the board is meeting. They haven't met since, I believe, ninety-five, somewhere to that effect, but they are meeting this week, so.
Good.
For the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we have two vacancies. Councilmember Cornell would like to appoint Gino Montez. And council has received the application through email. And we'll leave the vacancy for Councilmember Vasquez until he returns. For the Odessa Housing Finance Corps, they require certain requirements to serve on the board. The, the members that are up is Connie Coates. She serves as a Realtor. Her term has maxed out. And the Odessa Housing Finance Authority has recommended an individual, Courtney Ward, who also works with Connie Coates in that same office, is willing to take the place of Connie Coates, who is maxed out. Lance Markers' term is up. He serves as a head Realtor. He has just finished his first term, so he is willing to serve a second term if council wishes to reappoint. The last one that is up for this, this coming month is Megan Gossett. She's an attorney. She has termed out as well, and Mike Witbro is willing to serve as the attorney for the Odessa Housing Finance Corps. Now, these appointments are made in August. Would like to make note that their term actually starts in January. They want to be appointed in August so that, therefore, they can have time to attend the meetings and get a little bit knowledge of what's going on with the board. So their term will actually come, will be considered for council at the August next meeting, council meeting, but their appointment will start January first of the coming year. Those are the appointments for council consideration.
All right, and so we will do Gino tonight at council?
Yes, Gino.
Very good. All right, number fifteen, got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wind up the big old gavel adjourn.